Good evening, everyone. We will call the September 6, 2011 City Council Meeting to order. First order of business is roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene?
Nordstrom, Mason, Doyle, Sasso, Davis, Peterson, Roberts, Brown, Wright. We have quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Next order of business is our invocation as our pastor here tonight. Greg Blount from Calvary Chapel. Please rise.
Grateful to be here with you again tonight. And before we pray, just want to say on behalf of the church community, thank you so much for your dedication, your service to our community. That's a prayer. Father, we opened this meeting inviting your presence here. We are thankful that you love the people of Rapid City and you want what's best for them. And as a community, we're grateful to the men and women that you've appointed to govern us, give them wisdom as they carry the weight of knowing that their decisions impact many, many people. Lord, we would ask that you bless Mayor Quaker and the City Council members, the other officials here, and their families as they serve the great people of Rapid City. We ask this for your glory. Amen. (Inhales sharply) (Inhales sharply) (Inhales sharply) To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Blount. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. We have several items to add to the agenda. Charlene, correct me if I go astray on this, but we're going to be moving item 102A, or 102 up towards the beginning, the library card signup challenge. And we'll also have some beautification awards to present at that time. And did I miss anything?
103A, the sales tax report.
Yes, thank you very much. 103A will be an update on sales tax. We're going to do that after Vision 2012 would be an update from Charlene. We'll call that 103A. Do we have any additional items to add to the agenda? 102A?
Summer nights.
Okay. Well, I had item 102A, which is summer nights. Update on summer nights. Any additional items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall move.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of August 15 regular council meeting and the August 16 and 17 special council meetings. Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. For our yard of the month for August 2011, we'd like to recognize John Binger. Would you like to come up? Would you like to say a few words?
The reason that Mr. Binger is receiving his award in September rather than in August is because we couldn't find him. We knew the house, but we didn't have a phone number. And he finally contacted me the day after the last city council, so that's why he's here tonight. And we're glad that he could be. Congratulations.
Mr. Binger, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I appreciate the award. It's not really deserving after I look at some of the beautiful areas in town that the city keep. Mine is not in any comparison to that, but thank you.[592.16][592.16](Applause)
Gift certificate from Plant Smith for you.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you, John, for your efforts to beautify your neighborhood. Appreciate it. Absolutely. Have you met John Roberts?
Councilman?
Nice to meet you.
Stand right over here. The next yard of the month is in Ward 5. And our winner for September of 2011 is Greta Chapman. Come on up, Greta.[685.82][685.82](Applause) And this process was completely fair. She has a beautiful yard and deserves the award.[695.23][695.23](Laughter)
Greta was nominated by a fellow beautification member, Tom Allen. And he did not know Greta beforehand. He had no idea whose yard it was. He just goes by it many, many times to and from Mary Hall Park. And finally cornered her and asked her if he couldn't nominate her. And she is a well-deserving nominee.
Would you like to say a few words?
They've already clarified the ballot box was not stuffed. And Tom did come by in the early mornings and he asked me a couple different times. But two other things I would say is my husband, who isn't here, he's very much part of the lawn mowing and the watering during the appropriate times of city ordinances. And, oh, trust me, I watched that one. And lastly, it's great therapy. It keeps me pretty sane and I appreciate the award and the opportunity, so thank you.
Greta, you also received a gift certificate. Switching gears here from beautiful yards to wonderful libraries is a challenge that we are issuing, Greta and I, and from the library board and the city council. This is an executive proclamation. Whereas libraries build stronger cities by enabling individuals to make informed decisions, by promoting access to information, and by serving as community centers for economic development, lifelong learning, and shared community space. And in a world undergoing constant change, libraries provide enduring connections to the past and future of our communities, the events that shaped and the ones that continue to shape us. And the expansion of electronic, digital, and online resources require libraries and their staff to make possible better and more easily accessible information for library users in their community, state, and around the world. And libraries strengthen communities by providing open access to important research such as health, economics, housing, the environment, and education to support better living conditions and to help people lead longer, more productive, and fulfilling lives. Whereas libraries offer preschool storytimes and summer reading programs to encourage children to begin a habit of reading that will serve to benefit their personal and professional lives. And whereas over 50,000 people in Rapid City and Pennington County use their library cards with over 1 million items circulated annually, including the ones that my daughters fail to return. Therefore, I, Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, in conjunction with Greta Chapman, Director of the City Rapid City Public Library, do hereby proclaim September 2011 as Library Card Signup Month. And further encourage everyone to visit the Rapid City Public Library and sign up for a library card to help Rapid City meet the mayor's challenge of achieving 1,000 new cards during the month of September. Greta, would you like to say a few words?
Just again to thank the council and the mayor and the city for their support. 50,000 people with active library cards, and those are current records, by the way. We are above the average when it comes to usage within the community, when it comes to access within the community. Not without its challenges in these economic times, but we're also experiencing double-digit and triple-digit increases in some areas. So we really appreciate the support. We believe we can meet the challenge. We usually average around 500 cards a month, and we're looking to double that. We've met that on a regular basis, so we hope to do the same again this year. So thank you for your support.
We just want to take a moment here tonight to honor and thank our Chief of Police, Steve Allender, for the tremendous leadership that he has shown for all of his years on the force, but particularly last month during the tragedy that struck our community. When a tragedy like this happens, we have no choice but to put one foot in front of another and keep going. And tremendous leadership is required in a situation like that. And Steve Allender showed that leadership. I'd like to present, Steve, I'd like to present you a letter. This is dated today. And it says, "Chief Allender, each year, South Dakota Municipal League requests nominations for their Hall of Fame. The South Dakota Municipal League Hall of Fame was created to honor those elected and appointed officials and employees who have served municipalities in South Dakota for 20 or more years. I am pleased to announce that the league has accepted the nomination I sent on your behalf. With over 26 years of dedicated service to the city, you were an obvious choice for this recognition. Your strong and compassionate leadership following the tragedy of August 2, 2011 made this recognition even more necessary. The induction will take place at the Excellence in South Dakota Municipal Government Award Luncheon on October 6 at noon at the Ram Cota Hotel and Conference Center in Sioux Falls. It is my hope you will be able to attend this event and formally accept our city's appreciation for your many years of exceptional service and outstanding leadership.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for showing up.[1206.26][1206.26](Laughter) Certainly wasn't expecting this type of recognition. I'll spend the rest of my days wondering if I deserve it, but I'm very proud to serve the city and very proud to be your police chief.
And now our City Council President, Dave Davis, would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, you deserve it. I don't think there's any question in any of our minds. And I want to tell you a little story about what took place. We've heard a lot of stories. We've heard a lot of the details of the time immediately following August 2. But there's a little story of humility that I don't think you have heard, and I want to share with you. Richie's nodding because he was there with me when it took place. We were over at Ryan's Memorial, and there was a patrolman from Phoenix, retired, spends part of the year in Belfush. And the mayor happened to notice that he didn't have a black ribbon on his shield and asked me to go over and make sure that I got one for him. So I did. We visited. Richie and I were visiting with him, and Steve walked over and greeted and thanked him for coming and paying his respects. Introduced himself as Steve. As the conversation went on, the gentleman from Phoenix said, "By the way, what rank are you? Are you like the assistant chief or something around here?" And Steve said, "Well, actually, I'm the chief of police." And the gentleman said, "Really?" He said, "I'm used to seeing a chief where a star instead of an eagle." And Steve said, "We're pretty humble here in Rapid City." Does that sound like Steve? Well, we don't want that mistake ever to be made again. We don't want anyone to question who our chief of police is because he shows us in his leadership every day. Shirley, I would like you to come forward, if you would mind, and help the mayor as we take those damn eagles off his collar and pop that set of stars on there where they It's time that there's never a question in anyone's mind who the chief of police of the Rapid City PD truly is.
Maybe we can get someone in the dais back behind, too? You're hiding back behind it. Everybody, you gotta kind of move to the side. Rich, you gotta come in here. Keep coming, Rich. I'll see you yet. Okay? I think we've got y'all. Just remember where you were standing so you can pick yourself out when you get the
Thank you, everyone. And I would like to say that although I was involved in abating and, or aiding and abetting that plot, that our City Council President, Dave Davis, he hatched the idea. And I want to thank him for his leadership during the recent tragedies as well. So I'm proud to be a part of this team. Next order of business is general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. Do we have any general public comment items? Do not see any? So we will move on to our non-public hearing items, items 1 through 103. Next order of business is to open the public comment on items 1 through 73. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Doyle, to open public comment on items 1 through 73. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you know I have any public comment on items 1 through 73? Did I miss anyone that wanted to speak on items 1 through 73? Okay. Do we have a motion to close public comment for 1 through 73?
Shall move.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we move to consent items. This is consent items 1 through 72. Any member of the council or staff? Any member of the council or staff like to remove any items from 1 through 72? I understand that 22 needs to be pulled off and continued. Are there any other items that need to be pulled off for separate consideration? We'll recognize Alderman and Charity Doyle.
Item number 14, please.
Item 14. Dale Tech.
Item number 27.
Item 27. So far, we have 14, 22, and 27. Any others seen on? Do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent with the exception of 14, 22, and 27? We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson to approve items 1 through 72 with the exception of 14, 22, and 27. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14. Alderman Brown, would you read this into the agenda for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Deny, uh, number 14, to deny the request by Lazy PG for reimbursement of $656,250 for drainage improvements. And that would be my motion.
Motion by Brown, second by Peterson. We'll recognize Charity Doyle.
Yeah, I have some questions for Dale about this, if I may.
Please.
Okay. Dale, I'd heard about this issue prior to being sworn in. What I had heard on the street, if you will, is that because of the Wellington Heights development, that, you know, water runs downhill and this is where it was collecting now, that they were not required to put any storm basins. So, Mr. Davis ended up having to do that through like a verbal agreement with the city and that that's what this is? If that's not the case, could you clarify for me? Or... I could find no documentation on it, so...
If I may, Mr. Mayor. As far as I know, there were no agreements reached verbally for that. I believe the drainage basin plan did not identify any stormwater detention facilities in the Wellington area. They're all located downstream, if you will, from that as a regional facility would be. So, I guess I can't speak to what happened years ago as far as the lack of drainage improvements in that area.
Could you explain a little bit about where this reimbursement is stemming from then? Is this something that he just put in without being asked to and is now trying to get it reimbursed? Or...
There are varying improvements that he's requesting reimbursement for. A number of those improvements are located north of Catron Boulevard, which would be downstream of the Walmart site. A couple of the improvements are located outside of city limits and were constructed by the, by Lazy P6 in the county. And I don't believe that that was under any direction from the city to build those improvements. Those were made by Lazy P6 of their own accord, as far as I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to deny. We'll recognize Jerry Wright. Alderman Wright?
What are we going to do to resolve this issue? We've collected fees. We don't apparently have a good record of how it's accounted for, what, how, and how it's to be dispersed. How do we ultimately solve this problem?
Joel or Dale, do you... Would you like to jump in?
Dale or Joel?
I don't think we have an answer for you tonight. I mean, this is a much larger issue. It's not something that's going to get solved at the dais during a council meeting. I think we could have some ideas prepared. I know that the Public Works Department has suggested some things to solve this going into the future. There have been some discussions about trying to determine which fees or which basins the fees go into, but that looks like that's going to be cost prohibitive and time-consuming. There's some other options, but frankly, we need probably some time to look into that. This has been a problem that's several years in the making and isn't going to be solved very quickly, I don't think.
Dale?
May I, sir?
Please.
I don't... I guess we could deny this, but I think there's... Obviously, 20 years ago, a fund was established, I believe it was 1990, wasn't it? That the policy was established. And it was money collected and it's sitting there. And maybe some of that is due for improvements that were done over there. I don't know. And of course, this doesn't prove it necessarily. But I think there were probably, I'm just going to guess, I'm going to assume that there was some drainage fees collected for improvements within that district. Now, with the $600,000-some, I doubt it because it's the entire... I understand it's every drainage area within the city, correct, that is developing that the fee is collected on, correct? And we have no way of knowing how much came from here or whatever. And I... This is not the last we're going to see of this. I know that.
Dale Tech?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe you are correct, Alderman Wright. As I understand it, there's been roughly a million dollars collected over the last 20-some years for drainage basin fees. Understand that the decision was made to not determine what basins they went to when they were collected 20 years ago. And that has continued till this day. This particular basin, I think, was adopted in 2003. So, if we've been collecting, let's just say, a million dollars over the last 20 years and this basin has just been collecting fees in the last eight years, I would agree that there's nowhere near $600,000 in this one basin. I would hate to even venture against it how many dollars have been collected in this basin, but it's probably, you know, somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000.
It's probably safe to say that this developer's not the only one that's contributed some improvements to this basin, correct?
That's correct.
Can we deny this, excuse me, without prejudice or something so it can come back? Or what's a proper procedure? Because I know it's going to come back somewhere or somehow. We just deny it and wait for the next round? Or what?
Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. Keep in mind, I think there's really two issues. There's the overall general drainage fee, basin fee issue that probably does need to be resolved. And then there's the other issue of this specific request. It seems to me if you do $600,000 in drainage improvements, the time to have the discussion about, "I'm only going to build these if I get reimbursed for them," is to do it at the time you're building the improvements and get the agreement in writing. That wasn't done. To come back six or seven years later, or longer, might even have been longer on some of these, and say, "I should be reimbursed $600,000." That's not what the policy required. What the ordinance, my review of the ordinance, if everything had been done properly, this should have been a discussion that occurred at the time these improvements were made. And I know that in the past, we have had discussions with people for construction of the oversized improvements or improvements to serve off-site. We generally enter into fairly complicated agreements with them about how that's going to be paid for. And we have to identify the funding. And there's a plan in place for how we're going to meet those obligations. Again, in this specific request or any request of anybody who didn't have these discussions, my response would be the time to have asked for reimbursement or to have raised the issues of, "Should I be required to build this?" Was that the time that it was built, not many years later.
Alderman Wright?
I understand all that. I agree that money, if it's going to be spent, should have gone through a proper procedure of approval. And I sometimes, when I've looked at this over the last month of... And I've discussed this with the applicants or the person that sent the letter, their consultant. And that just informs me a little bit more of it. But I think that this is probably a way of, a message to us that we have to formally resolve how we're going to collect this money and how we're going to spend it. And if we've been collecting it for 20 years, why aren't we doing something with it? And I think that's probably the intent of this letter. And I think we need to get serious about meeting with this owner and maybe the entire community that's involved and come up with a solution because we obviously have not. I mean, to have something sitting on a book for 20 years doing nothing and no resolution and no procedure is kind of embarrassing, I think. And with that, I will yield the floor.
Alderman Gary Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Pauline. Pauline, could you clarify for us a bit? What kind of a fund do we have? What's the amount that's in there? And what, has there been any dispersments, anything that you found?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dale Tech is correct in that we have collected over a million dollars for the, through drainage fees. I believe in 2009, the City Council at that time directed the finance office to create a separate fund for the drainage basin fees that were collected. Currently, as of today, there's approximately $620,000 in that fund left. So, expenses have been made throughout the years for drainage, either improvements or studies or something that would enhance the drainage within the community.
Thank you, Pauline. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple pieces of this that I think have been pointed out, but just to reiterate and clarify. The first one is the assessment itself and the fact that it probably, not probably, it hasn't been collected and accounted for in a way that we can legitimately track it today. Very difficult then to distribute the funds to the appropriate places when we've put it in one coffee can under the bed, so to speak, that we'll come back later and dig into it. And that seems to be what we've done. On the other hand, we've got an individual that went ahead and took on a project of their own, spent their own money of their own accord, and has sent us a bill. Now, as my daddy used to say to me, "Two wrongs doesn't make a right." And I really look at this, that we've got two wrongs. We can make one of these right and we can clean up how we're accounting for the assessment and how we're distributing those funds. And we need to do that. And that needs to be done as soon as we can legitimately divide those funds up. As far as paying someone for a project that they took upon themselves without authorization, I think that's an extremely dangerous precedent. I think that's opening a door that invites a lot of folks to bring a myriad of projects in front of us and say, "But, you know, here's the bill." And that's very frightening to me. I would caution that immensely.
Alderman Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. As one of the former council members taught me, Councilman Davis, using one of the old adages, "If the paintwork ain't done, the job ain't done." So, unfortunately, in my perception on this, the paperwork doesn't, wasn't done properly. We're missing a lot of documentation. One of the other concerns that I have on this is that by my measure, we use bid, a bid process, to ask for some of these projects to be done or completed or even requested for. And those ingredients, in my mind, have been missing on this whole project as well. Without all that documentation, the bids and the RFPs, all of that information being absent, I can't feel nothing but go along with the denial. If any of that information was available, then I would have second thoughts about this. But right now, I can't go any other direction but go along with denial. Thank you.
Alderman Wright?
I would support denial because I too think that this is a bill for the total amount for one basin. And apparently, the money was collected for, I think, 20-some basins, if I'm right, something like that. And I think that all of them probably have contributed, so I don't think that would be fair. But I do think after we deny this, if that's the action that's taken, we should have a follow-up motion to immediately get our house in order as fast as we can legally to include how we collect, who we collect, and how it's dispersed. And I'll not make that motion until this action's complete.
I believe that will be on the next Public Works agenda for follow-up.
Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson?
Thank you. This is an important issue and it had me wondering if there's other city accounting techniques or paths that were done incorrectly, like that are in the similar situation as this fund. Because we need to start bringing those forward and getting them rectified. So, I would encourage the finance officer to try to identify these types of funds that we're not keeping track of, like where the money's coming from, so that in the future we don't run into this problem. And I don't know if we have to do creative accounting so that we don't have to go way back to account for every penny. But it's real important that we bring these accounts up to, up to date so that we know what we're, what we're doing. And also to identify other ones that might be similar to this at the same time. And this is not to disparage your otherwise excellent bookkeeping and accounting techniques that I know you've inherited a lot of these situations. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Dale, if I might. We are prepared to bring forward an update on the policy as we go forward at the next Public Works meeting.
I don't know that we're prepared to bring anything forward. We certainly, staff would, I think, appreciate some direction as to what to do. We can put together some ideas and bring those ideas forward and have the council or the committee formalize those ideas into policy. And I guess that's the direction I think we need at this point in time.
Why don't we plan on doing that at the next Public Works meeting?
Very good.
Add that to the agenda. Any further discussion? The motion is to deny. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number 22. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. 22 is authorize the mayor and finance officers to sign an agreement between the city of Rapid City and C-Tech Engineering Services Incorporated for professional services for Mount Rushmore Road Utilities Reconstruction. Project number SSW11-1926, CIP number 50840, and the amount of $176,949.50. I move to approve.
I believe the recommendation is to continue.
Okay.
Alderman Brown, would you like to have that be your motion?
That'll be my motion then.
Motion by Brown, second by Peterson? Any further discussion? Be none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 27.
27 is to acknowledge the Drainage Basin Improvement Cost Report. Mr. Tech?
Thank you. I gave a short presentation at the Public Works Committee last Tuesday, and I would like to give that same presentation here this evening. As stated in item number 14, there are 21 drainage basins that a drainage basin design plan has been adopted in the city. This is what a drainage basin design plan looks like. The content of the drainage basin design plans is typically an inventory of the existing drainage facilities, the major drainage facilities in the basin, and then a recommendation as to what the ultimate drainage facilities need to be in that basin to help alleviate flooding for the 10- and 100-year storm events. As each basin is adopted, there is a fee that is adopted with it. I believe the first basin was adopted back in the late 1980s. The associated fee is, was structured such that all of the improvements, the dollar amount of the improvements was decided, divided by the total number of acres. So, then you come up with the per acre cost for all the improvements. Ranges anywhere from a few hundred dollars per acre to a few thousand dollars per acre for the 21 basins currently within the city of Rapid City. A number of years ago, all of the improvements that have not been made were inventoried. And if you can see in this column here, there's about $145 million worth of improvements that need to be made in $20.11 for all of the facilities identified in the design plans. Currently, there's about $2 million per year in drainage capital improvement dollars that are allocated for drainage. Of those $2 million, not all of those dollars go to these facilities. A good portion of those dollars go to, if we're reconstructing... A good portion of those dollars go to, if we're reconstructing a street, the storm sewer that's in that street, any major crossings, any bridges, anything like that. The funds from the CIP cover that. So during the course of a year, we're lucky to do about $1 million worth of drainage basin design plan improvements. The discussion, I guess I'm bringing forward to you, is drainage is underfunded in the City of Rapid City. I think a number of years ago, the city did the right thing and did the study to determine what improvements need to be made and gave enough forward thought to develop all these design plans. There's been talk about drainage utility fee over the last 20 years in the City of Rapid City. State statute allows for the collection of a drainage utility fee. It was tried out in the county for a number of years, was successful, however, it became politically unfavorable, therefore it was discontinued. I think if people are serious about drainage improvements, either our capital improvement plan needs to be supplemented or drainage utility fee needs to be implemented. I would stand by for any questions regarding the overall drainage situation in City of Rapid City.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Dale, for bringing this to the council. I don't think many people realize the liability we have in our drainage systems and the fact that most of them are in poor repair, undeveloped, and impacted by development above them. It's just the way it's been. And yes, 20 years ago, we started in the right direction and never finished the job. I think our earlier discussion indicates that also. I think that we have $144 million of need out there. At $1 million a year and 144 years with no growth, we're going to meet it. That's not acceptable, I don't believe. And besides that construction, there's also the maintenance side of it. When we build an open channel, there's trees and grass and rocks and stuff that need to be maintained, and that costs money. We have storm sewer pipe that has to be vacuumed and cleaned and flushed and so forth, and ultimately, some repair and maintenance and replacement. I think as a part of this project that's being talked about for our next Public Works Committee, I think we begin the process of realistically funding and programming this project. I know it's going to probably be unacceptable to some people, but I think the liability's there. And if we look at a drainage area where I live, on Fourth Avenue, a big rainfall in the Red Dale Drainage is probably not going to hurt me. But a neighbor two blocks away is probably going to go through his garage. And I think it's throughout our entire community that way. I think we need to do something while we have time and we can prove being responsible. I always like to use the, in 1963, there was, and I've talked about this at Public Works, and I've read this book, there was a study done of the Rapid Creek Floodway. Perry Ron and a bunch of people, School Mines and so forth, were on it. And the thing I remember so distinctly was in the last chapter, the closure of that report, that said the Rapid Creek Floodway needs to be cleared and made safe, but it's politically unacceptable. Nine years later, God interfered and made it happen. Let's not allow this type of neglect, create another catastrophe, maybe not of the same portion, but let's do something that's right. And I think we need a good, strong program that's going to require funding, it's going to require good accounting and good engineering, but some political will to do it right. I stand there. Thank you.
Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. Dale, are you saying we're $143 million short in this fund?
Yes.
Well, I'm glad you brought this to our attention. What, how much if we would go down the route of doing utility or drainage fees? What is the, what would the cost be to the typical homeowner?
State statute allows up to $3 per resident per month. So if you own a parcel of property, you'd pay a maximum of $36 per year. State statute also has that split out where a maximum of $2 per month can be collected for capital improvements, and a maximum of $1 per month can be collected for maintenance. So of the $3, two would be for capital improvements and $1 would be for maintenance.
I'm sure this will be brought up when we're doing our budget talks. I'm very concerned because of the potential for flooding in certain areas or just the neglect that we have noticed that could potentially be dangerous to people, not alone besides property. So thank you, Dale, for bringing this to our attention.
Recognize Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I guess we're doing a little sidebar here. Apologize. First of all, Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing this to my attention way back when I first got elected to the City Council. And I have been approaching this subject through Dale Teck on numerous occasions, so I want to thank Dale for bringing this forward and all of this information, especially all the homework that he's done on this. So I thank you for your effort on putting this data together. The other council members that spoke before me about this being in the budget process, woefully underfunded to begin with, and then the opportunity to take another look at this during the budget process, I can't help but support that concept. So when we do get into that area of the budgets, let's really take a strong look at what is allowed for this. I've taken a lot of pictures of the drainage areas around town, and I thank the other council members for taking me on car tours of their wards as well. And also thank them for going along with me on a car tour of my ward and showing off the drainage areas in my ward. And just to reemphasize what Alderman Wright has to contend with in the Red Dale area is it is a real problem that we're coming up on. And if we come across a real storm event, a serious storm event, Alderman Wright's area is going to be in deep trouble, probably more so than a mine. One of the other areas that has been brought to my attention is the FEMA area has, the FEMA Department has brought it to my neighbors and me as well, down in my area along the Mead Creek area. We're now in a flood zone, and we have to get flood insurance. And I'm not saying it's because of the drainage areas, but it is a contributing factor because of the conditions of those drainage areas. So I'm looking forward to this discussion, taking a forward motion on this. So thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Alderman Sasso.
One of the things that I think is important is that when we look at the floodplain and, you know, FEMA, there are a lot of houses that are now in the floodplain that weren't. The other thing, too, that often takes place that we don't realize is sometimes houses, just because of the improper drainage, ends up affecting foundations, which affects property values and so forth. So I move that we move this forward to Public Works for further discussion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Sasso, a second by Wright, to return this to Public Works for further discussion, presentation of options. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have a motion on 73? Continue to September 19. Motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson to continue 73 to September 19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next order of business is the non-consent items, which is items 74 through 103. Will open public comment? Do we have a motion? Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson to open public comment on items 74 through 103. Actually, that'd be 103A, which will include the sales tax presentation and 102A, which is summer nights. All in favor of opening public comments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Would you not have any speaker request forms for these items? Is there anyone that would like to speak on items 74 through 103A? Not, do we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Wright and a second by Roberts to close public comment on 74 through 103A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And our vice chair of legal and finance, Charity Doyle.
Item number 74, the second reading of ordinance number 5731, a supplemental appropriation number six for 2011. I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. And Pauline, would you like to briefly discuss the change, the research that you're doing on tax increment financing and the reporting?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. As part of this supplemental appropriation, you'll see there's $122 million for tax increment districts. This is due to an accounting change that was required of us in 2008. Even though that the city does not expend funds for tax increment district projects, we are required to show the capital expenditure as our expenditure and the debt proceeds as our debt on our financial statements, even though our agreements say that it is clearly not the city's debt. I am going to be contacting the Department of Legislative Audit to see if they have any written opinion on requiring us to make this reporting, because there is some conflicting documents as to if this reporting is required or not. In speaking with our auditor today, they actually informed me that we are probably one of the only states that are required to show the TID debt on our financial statements because we kind of do our TIDS differently than most cities. Most cities not in South Dakota will actually take a bond out to do the improvements themselves, and so it obviously would be then the city's debt. In our case, we require the developer procure their own financing, and then any sales or property tax payments will go towards that debt. But I am doing some more research on that to see if this is going to be an ongoing requirement of ours, or if this is going to become obsolete, I guess is the term.
Pauline, would you recommend that we divide the question and vote on the first part of the appropriation ordinance and strip out the rest and deal with it later? Or do you think we should proceed with this vote tonight?
Personally, Mayor, I think we should proceed with this vote tonight. That way, we are covered for 2011, and if anything were to change, it would probably be effective for next year anyway.
Very good. Any further discussion on this? Motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 75.
Second reading, item, our second reading of ordinance number 5733, ordinance to allow the Rapid City Common Council to review email messages during city council meetings by amending section 2.04.120B of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 76.
Item number 76 is a first reading of ordinance number 5739, fiscal year 2012 appropriation ordinance, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 77.
First reading of ordinance number 5740, an ordinance changing the name of the Department of Growth Management to Department of Community Planning and Development Services by amending section 2.47 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Brown. Any further discussion on this item? Not, I'd like to say just a few words if I can. I just want to say thank you to Brett Limbaugh for his tremendous work and leadership on items 77 through 86. He's just put a tremendous amount of work into this. I had given him some very stringent guidelines or deadlines, and he was able to meet and exceed those, and I just want to thank you for your work. These, this handful of ordinances, they're very boring to read, but they're very exciting in terms of what it represents, in terms of cutting red tape and making business easier to do at City Hall. So I want to thank the council and Brett for their work on this. And this, there's a lot of people that have put a lot of time into this, so particularly our second floor committee. And Janelle Fink is here tonight, I believe, and her committee, under her leadership, put a tremendous amount of work into this as well. So I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 78.
First reading, ordinance number 5741, an ordinance modifying the procedure for certain amendments to the city's comprehensive plan by amending section 2.60.160 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 79.
First reading of ordinance number 5742, an ordinance defining a side-load garage by adding section 17.04.631 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 80.
First reading, ordinance number 5743, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the low-density residential district one by amending section 17.10.050 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 81.
First reading, ordinance number 5744, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the Park Forest District by amending section 17.08.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Brown. Any discussion on item 81? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 82.
First reading, ordinance number 5745, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the medium-density residential district by amending section 17.12.050 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. As amended, and I move approval with revised stipulations.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson for approval with revised stipulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 83.
First reading, ordinance number 5746, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the high-density residential district by amending section 17.14.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Sasso for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 85.
84.
84.
Thank you. First reading of ordinance number 5747, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the general agricultural district by amending section 17.34.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Sasso for approval of item 84. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 85.
First reading, ordinance number 5748, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the mobile home residential district by amending section 17.38.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 86.
First reading, ordinance number 5749, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the low-density residential district two by amending section 17.44.0540, excuse me, of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nordstrom, and we'll recognize Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring to attention to Mr. Limbaugh and also to my fellow councilmen that these readings that we've just, new rules that we're just approving greatly lets, we're really encroaching on the front of going toward the street, and that we need to remember this, that when people come before us wanting exceptions, we need to stop and remember that we've already given a lot to them before they even ask for the exception because my concern is they'll, you know, want to build right on the sidewalk. So anyway, I just want to point that out to everyone. Thank you.
Any further discussion on eighty-six, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries, item eighty-seven, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eighty-seven is a request by Spurly Consulting Incorporated for Ronald Sharp, Shape, excuse me, for preliminary plat for proposed lots two through thirteen of block seven and lots two through twelve of block eight of Homestead subdivision. The described is located at the eastern terrace of Homestead Street and north of Carl Avenue. I move to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Peterson to approve with stipulations, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries, eighty-eight.
Request by Renner and Associates LLC for Skyline Pines East Land Company for preliminary plat for track one, lot nineteen, and dedicated Fairmont Boulevard right-of-way of Skyline Pines East subdivision, located at the current western terrace of Fairmont Boulevard west of Mount Rushmore Road. I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Brown and a second by Roberts to approve with stipulations, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries, eighty-nine.
Request by Dream Design International Incorporated for preliminary plat for proposed lot K of Race Track subdivision. Legally described is located at the northeast corner of Jolly Lane and East Highway forty-four. I move to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Motion by Brown and a second by Roberts to approve with stipulations on eighty-nine. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries, item ninety.
Request by Spurly Consult, Consulting Incorporated for Century Resources Incorporated for preliminary plat for proposed lot two R and lot three R dash two of block one, Bernard subdivision, located on the south side of East Anamosa Street, southeast of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and North Creek Drive. I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Brown, second by Peterson to approve with stipulations on item ninety. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries, ninety-one.
Request by Brian Vulcan for Ian and Amanda Linden High, hope I pronounced that right, for preliminary plat for proposed lot eighty-nine and lot four A of block one of Canyon Springs Preserve, located northwest of the intersection of Nemo Road and North Emerald Ridge Road. I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Brown, second by Peterson to approve item ninety-one with stipulations, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Posed motion carries, item ninety, item number ninety-two, Alderman Doyle.
The Ad Hoc Sign Code Revision Task Force Committee Recommendations. I move to continue this to Legal and Finance on September fourteenth. And then, if I may, have the floor.
Okay. We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts to continue this to the September fourteen Legal and Finance Committee meeting. And Alderman Doyle, you have the floor.
Okay, I just want to let people know that our intention here is to move as much of this, as Mayor references it, the low-hanging fruit, forward as we possibly can or move as much of it forward as we have legal clarity on. The remainder where there's, the waters are a little muddied, where we want to take and give that due consideration and, and kind of be splitting the items up. So just know that moving forward, that's what we're going to be doing, thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add on to Alderman Doyle's comment, the intent also is to, given that we have ratified the budget either tomorrow night or next Monday night, that we would take the special council meeting that we have set aside for September twenty-sixth, specifically for the purpose of looking at those projects that aren't the low-hanging fruit, so to speak. So, we're looking at, at, those that we feel are going to be more controversial of giving everybody an opportunity to be heard. So, don't, don't look that we're trying to push this through, in fact, it's just the opposite. There's some of these things that are very simple that need to get handled. There's some of them that are, need a lot more debate. So, it most likely will be a special council meeting and that will be announced, but that's what we're looking forward to.
Any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries, item ninety-three.
Authorization for the Mayor and Finance Officer to sign sublease agreement with Pennington County, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle and second by Peterson for approval of item number ninety-three. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to inform you that the county commissioners did sign this agreement at their meeting today. It is the one that has been attached to your agenda. It has been what has been discussed thus far, that the interest rate will be four point one one, one percent, and it will be for thirty years. And it will be determined exactly the amount when the, the projects are completed. But at this point, there are estimates in the agreement because we're, we won't know until the project is complete what the final costs are. But the, Wade is here also to help discuss this. I would just wanted to point out that there's percentages in there that we will, as far as operating costs are concerned, will be operated just the way that the Law Enforcement Center is currently, based on what percent is occupied by the city, so.
I think that's everything I could think of, I guess. I'd answer any questions from the legal side of things.
And can I also point out that we kind of got in on this at the very end of it? So, if he doesn't know the answer, we will definitely find it for you, between the two of us, we don't know.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for approval. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries. Thank you. Item ninety-four.
Item ninety-four is the employee severance plan, and I recommend continuing this to the second Legal and Finance meeting from now in order to vet, have time to vet all the pertinent information, examine our current policy, and then tighten up that policy as necessary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue, to not, to the next Legal and Finance meeting, but the one after that. Do we know the date of that? The twentieth?
No. Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth of September. Okay. We'll go to Alderman Wright.
Thank you, sir. Just would like to ask that when it goes to committee, that, that the, the extensive list of people that are on that, that serve at, at will, if there's any way that that could be minimized and placed in a employee standard package, then I would be more apt to support doing away with the severance package. But I think that if we, I understand the, the logic behind it, but I think we also need to look at if there are some people we're going to bring in, and to a certain extent, their, their careers are at risk, we need to, we need to understand that. And, and we need to, how do you say, provide some reasonable provision so that they were, are willing to accept a promotion, especially if they're within the existing structure. So I think if we can minimize the number of people that are subject to that would help. And I'm looking forward to some more discussion on it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item number ninety-five. Alderman Brown, would you read this into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Ninety-five, East St. Patrick Street Assessed Sidewalk Project, Sidney Hansen. Motion to deny.
We have a motion denied, do we have a second? Second by Roberts, motion by Brown, second by Roberts to deny the request. We'll go to Alderman, Jerry Wright, Jerry.
I'm talking a lot, I apologize. But on this issue, I think that there was, according to the letters from Sidney, an agreement in the early on that there would not be any ADA ramps in the project. And then we put them in and that's what we're billing him for, and that's what he's asking for, exception two. I think we should honor that, personally. I don't know all the details, but that's what I've read. If that's true, then I think we should honor it. Thank you.
Any further discussion, we'll recognize Alderman Sasso. Ron?
One of the, one of the things I know when we look at sidewalks and, and accessibility is something that Rapid City is still a ways behind. And I think any, anytime we can move forward, and I, and I believe this is one of the projects where that was deemed something to do as far as an improvement to that sidewalk. And I think that's, that's the way that we really need to go. Accessible sidewalks, they benefit everybody, not, not just somebody in a wheelchair. They benefit bikers, you know, they benefit people with strollers. So, this is something that really, you know, believe that we need to deny this request. Thank you.
Alderman, Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I was under the understanding that the reason that these curb cuts got put in was because we needed to meet some kind of federal regulation, is that not true? Was it just a, a change order, a WIM, a MOOD, what was it? Who would I ask?
My understanding is, is that this was an ADA requirement, we recognize Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city has adopted its own ADA transition plan, which is a requirement from the state. We follow federal guidelines. There's ADAG and PROWAG are the two ADA design standards that we follow. Anytime we're working in public right-of-way, we do our very best to meet, it's called PROWAG. I believe it stands for Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guide for ADA. Each one of the city projects that we do, we do our very best to meet the PROWAG requirements. And I see this as being no different.
Then, may I continue? Could you give us a little history as to, I mean, was this, did it start out this way? Or was there a change order in question? Because I was unable to locate the change order that he keeps referring to.
When the project was initially brought forward to the council, it was missed. The, the approach into Mr. Hanson's property is actually more of a street intersection than an approach. Therefore, you've got to do something a little different there, there as far as the sidewalk accessibility is concerned. Upon looking at it in the field, much discussion with the contractor, the construction group, it was decided that we can't leave that vertical curb there for people to traverse. There needed to be something done. That was brought forward to the city council. The city council acted on the change order to install those ramps.
And he was notified at that time?
I believe so, yes.
And was it, I know there was talk about it actually, this was the most cost-effective option?
Yeah, the, the only other option was to completely remove the, the intersection that was there and to install a regular driveway approach. And instead of the two thousand some odd dollars that the change order was, it probably would have been an additional six thousand dollars. So, in my opinion, this was the cheapest alternative to gain ADA accessibility for this particular access point.
And just one more point of clarification. Mr. Hanson was provided ample time to take care of these improvements himself?
Yes, I believe the sidewalks were initially ordered in in two thousand and eight, and this project was finally constructed in twenty-ten. So there was nearly two years there that the council, Public Works Committee, city staff worked with Mr. Hanson to try to get him to install the, these improvements. He chose not to, and then the city did an assessed project.
Thank you.
Alderman, Jerry Wright.
Well, my issue is not with ADA ramps at all. I support them. My issue is that, as I understand it from Mr. Hanson's letter, that there was an agreement in the original assessment project, there, there would be no ADA ramps installed. And we went in and did it. So I think we broke our own contract, we were unword with him, did we not? And I, and the other thing about that approach, it's, it's an old street right-of-way with an approach constructed probably when St. Pat was built, we talked about that earlier. It's now a driveway approach, and it's kind of a mess. It didn't solve any problems, per se, and I, I think it's kind of a, not a, not a well-resolved issue, right, between those two points of curb. And I think, bottom line is, we said there would be no ADA ramps installed, and yet we're billing them for them, and that's it. I, I'm supporting ramps, that's not the point. I just don't think we're honoring our word, if that's the way it was. I'm done, thank you.
We recognize Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Dale, have you looked at this letter that we received from Mr. Hanson? And he's talking about on these drawings that do not install ADA ramps. On that, was he had, is there any case be made that he was misled? Or, or it sounded like maybe he went back out and found out it was a different kind of driveway, like it wasn't a typical driveway, it was a street access? I'm just trying to get some clarification between what he's reporting and...
What he's referring to is a note on the set of plans that says, no ADA work or driveway work is required. As I stated earlier, that was the initial thought. When it came to light that this really wasn't a driveway, but a street intersection, something needed to be done, in our opinion. The council agreed, therefore approved the change order to install those ramps.
Okay, so we haven't really gone back retroactively and recharged him for, this was kind of all included in the first?
Yes, the, the change order was initiated, the construction was done, and then the final costs, including that change order, were assessed to Mr. Hanson, as well as his adjoining neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, Alderman Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm being a stickler on documentation tonight, but if I understand the procedure on this is that the original proposal was no ADA ramps in there. The council came along and later on said, no, we've got to have ADA ramps in there. Do we have that documentation? I'm assuming that's available. All, all I've got in front of me are, are letters from Mr. Hanson. So I'm assuming there's another side to the story. And I'm not saying that we, I'm not saying that we're getting inaccurate information, but I'm just making sure we've got all of our, all of our hurdles covered here, or our hoops covered so that we aren't missing any documentation on this. So, at this point, it looks like we've got everything in place that requires the ADA ramps. Am I missing something here? So, that's my question to Dale Tech, is that we do have all the documentation in, in order, correct?
Yes, all the documentation is in order. The change order went through Public Works Committee, went through city council. All that information has been provided to Mr. Hanson upon his earlier requests. All the information's there.
So, and so if I understand, the motion is to deny the request, is that correct? So, I, I'll be supporting the denial. Thank you, Mayor, I'll yield the floor.
Alderman Wright.
Thank you, sir. Was Mr. Hanson advised the change order prior before it being approved or ordered in?
I don't know that I can answer that.
That's part of the documentation that we don't have. Correct? I mean, you're asking about, are we documenting all that? The, the change order was approved by the project engineer, I'd assume, brought to council and approved and done, correct? But was the owner advised?
I can't answer that.
I don't know. He doesn't appear to have been advised. And I guess that's my point.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to deny the request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries with one no, for Alderman Wright. Item number ninety-six.
Pedestrian scramble at Sixth Street and Main Street. John?
Recognize John Les, our traffic engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a brief presentation here. Soon as it gets going, okay. Several months ago, the Rapid City Downtown Association came before the council with a number of suggestions that they felt would enhance pedestrian travel downtown. One of those suggestions was a, a leading pedestrian phase, or an advanced pedestrian phase. That was something that we had actually had sitting on the shelf. We had done some work two years ago with Destination Rapid City, when John Brewer was with that organization. And it sat on the shelf, and then following the Downtown Association's presentation, that was implemented. And I don't know if any, some of you may have noticed that downtown, it was implemented, I want to say sometime in late May, early June. The second suggestion they had was regarding raised crosswalks or raised intersections. And in discussions with then Public Works Director Ellis, the thought was those improvements... And in discussions with then Public Works Director Ellis, the thought was, those improvements were pretty substantial. They involved drainage work, pavement work. It was thought those would best be included with future road improvement projects. The Sixth Street project was too far along to get that included in that project, so I think that is sitting on hold out there. The last and final suggestion they had that I'm going to talk about tonight is the idea of a scramble walk, or click here. I'm going to call it scramble walk. It goes by a couple different names. One is Barnes Dance, which is in honor of Henry Barnes, who was the city of Denver's traffic engineer in post-war years, and he popularized the concept there. It's also known as diagonal crossing or exclusive pedestrian phase. So, in case anyone wants to do any further research, you might search on these other terms as well. Here's a couple, I thought I'd bring along a couple of photos just to show you what it looks like. This is a pretty bare-bones example. It's just simply pavement markings on the road. This is a little fancier example. This is in Los Angeles's Chinatown district, and they've done some decorative pavement along with pavement markings. This is a super duper version in London. This is Oxford Square, and they've done pavement work. They have islands out there, very high pedestrian area. So, when, this is a tool in the traffic engineer's toolbox. When do we use it? Well, unlike traffic signals where there's a nationally accepted set of criteria, my counterpart in Bellevue, Ohio will use the same warrants that I would use to see if a signal's needed in Rapid City. Scramble walks don't have a single agreed-upon set of criteria, but going through different ones, I've compiled kind of the intersection of all their features. And one of them that they agree on is that this is used on low-speed roads generally. It's used on intersections where a major road and a minor road intersect, and that's primarily because of the timing, which I'll get into in a little bit here. They're also used, they're also appropriate when you have very high pedestrian volumes. Very high is one of those ambiguous terms. The references will cite anywhere from 300 crossings per hour at least, to upwards of 3,000 pedestrian crossings per hour. But at any rate, what they all call for is very, very high volumes of people crossing the street. And along with the high volume of people crossing the street comes a large number of turning vehicles, which have conflicts with the large number of pedestrians. The advantages of a scramble walk, there's really two. You completely separate people from cars, and you also, when you have large volumes of people, you can reduce the amount of storage area you need on the corners. If you can think back, I don't want to go backwards here to that slide, but when you have thousands of people crossing, you have actually queues of people. You have rows of people walking across the street, and everybody takes up space, so you need space on corners. I know that some talk in the past have talked about traffic calming advantages of scramble walks, but that's really a different subject. It has nothing to do with traffic calming. It's entirely different presentation. Disadvantages of a scramble walk. Well, you may increase the delay for pedestrians because they only get one chance to cross. Even if you don't increase the delay, people can get a sense that it takes longer because, and again, I'll come, there'll be a slide showing the phasing, but they come up to the intersection and there's one chance to cross. And when they miss that chance, they have to stand there while the cross-street traffic goes, and then the other traffic goes, and the walk symbol never comes up. It always says, "Don't walk." So, when they're proceeding delay and they get frustrated, they're going to violate the "don't walk" symbol and cross the street when they're not supposed to, and get in, you know, into conflict with turning vehicles. And that was the whole point of separating everybody. Lastly, the last disadvantage is it may increase vehicle delays. And again, I'll talk a little more about that in a moment. So, the big question is, we're looking at Sixth and Main Street in conjunction primarily with the Main Street Square Park opening. So, the things that I needed to look at were, how much time does a pedestrian need to get from corner to corner? What's the effect of taking that much time on the peak traffic volumes in the afternoon? And then what would be the effect on the level of service? And level of service is every intersection gets a grade, just like in school, A, B, C, D, E. And so, we crunch the numbers and come up with a letter grade for a before and after condition. This might look kind of scary, but it's actually not that hard to understand. The lines going diagonally there all represent, each line represents a number of cars. And so, on Main Street, if you've ever started down by the post office and driven a speed limit, you can make it through all the lights generally, in that kind of, that window or band, if you will, of all those tightly clumped-together lines. And the, let's see, I'm not sure if I have a pointer on here, but if you look over on the left-hand side, you see the intersection of Main and Fifth. Main and Fifth is really the control point for Main Street, because we have to provide enough time for Fifth and enough time for Main Street. So, the green window that you see there for the traffic on Main Street, that's all that you can get through there. That's all the time available. The next intersection up is Sixth Street, and you can see we have more green than we really need. And so, when we looked at implementing a scramble walk, what it does is shrink down that green window at Sixth and Main to match more or less the green window at Fifth and Main. So, here's another way to look at it. Here's, if you look at the bottom, what we're running today is pedestrians, if you look at the left, pedestrians get a five-second head start, and then Sixth Street goes, and then that stops, and then Main Street pedestrians get a five-second head start, and then Main Street goes. Well, here's what we would do with a scramble walk. Pedestrians would get 33 seconds to cross, every which way they can. And then Sixth Street would get 20 seconds to go, and the pedestrians would have to wait. And then Main Street would get 37 seconds to go, and again, pedestrians couldn't cross in those, in that time slot either. It could be done, as those figures showed, but there is a cost. And what this is showing is, with the scramble walk, the top line, that's our afternoon backup. And what that's caused by is the number of left turners, say, coming from the hospital area, heading north, making a left turn on a Main Street, they're stepping into the flow of traffic out of sync, so to speak. So, they make their left turns, and then they get stuck at Sixth Street. Well, with the scramble walk, it takes away our flexibility to be able to start Sixth a little earlier to get those people going before the Main Street people get going to catch up to them. And so, what this slide is showing is that in 10 years, if we assume a 1%, 1.5% annual growth in traffic, that afternoon backup is going to be somewhere near the Rapid City terminal offices. So, that's one of the costs of installing the phasing. The other cost is that grade. Right now, the intersection works at a level of service B. With the scramble walk, it would go to a level of service C. Not a big difference, but the big impact is on the lineup from the left turners off of Fifth Street. There are some other considerations, too, other than timing. Dale mentioned ADA issues, you know, were required to comply with. And there are also signal modifications needed. It's not just a simple programming step like the advanced phase was. This is an older picture, aerial photo of the intersection, but just to remind everybody, on each corner, well, the three remaining corners now, there's some streetscape features. There's a little wall and a seating area. To accommodate ADA-compliant ramps, those areas may need to be modified or removed. And that's a cost, infrastructure cost, associated with the phasing work. Additionally, we would have to install pedestrian indications, you know, the "don't walk" lights to face diagonal for people crossing diagonal. And so, that has a cost as well, both financially and aesthetically on the park corner. If you notice, they've installed other pavers. It looks nice. We would have to go in and take bricks out and install a signal hole with pedestrian signals on it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, John, for the presentation. We recognize Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we're leading up to is just acknowledging this report. John, if I can have you go back to, I guess, for easier clarification, and maybe Dale can help us out a little bit, too, is on the very first slide, if that's possible. The overhead, even that last one will work, too. Whichever is convenient for you, John. And while John is bringing that up, I just wanted to thank Alderman Malcolm Chapman for creating the position of having a traffic engineer be in a new position within the city. So, without this type of expertise, we wouldn't be able to see these, this actual data. If there's a way we can point out the nodules, or the nodes, or the seating area that John has referred to in the corners? That's the area of concern that I have, is that we would have to remove, thank you, Dale, the, we would have to remove all of these areas here to allow for pedestrian crosswalks there. The other factor that I'm taking into consideration is the, again, Dale, if you may, if I might ask you, is up in the corners there, if you can find the traffic signal lights on the aerial? What we'll need up in that area is additional signals, so that the diagonal crosswalks are going to have to have additional lighting up there, so that when they do the scramble portion, we're going to need some more lighting up in that area.
If I may, Alderman Nordstrom.
Yes.
What John's referring to is, as pedestrians are walking in this manner, there's a signal over here that tells them to walk, don't walk. If they're going to be crossing in a diagonal function, they need the same type of indication right there.
Correct, yes.
So, in effect, what would have to happen is the addition of four pedestrian signal heads roughly in those locations. So, the diagonal walkers have a signal indication that it's okay for them to walk.
Exactly. And then the last area that I'm looking at here and for this project is, I think John emphasized it plenty of times, that this is an area that, or this type of project needs a large number of pedestrians to make it feasible. In my mind, I see this as, we need more pedestrians versus automotive transportation going through there. And if I understand the data correctly now, it's the reverse. We have more cars than pedestrians going through this area. And so, John, thank you very much for your presentation, and I appreciate all the time you spent with me on the, giving me, especially explaining that lined graph chart to me as well. I appreciate it. Thank you. I'll yield the floor, Mayor.
Thank you, Richie, for the questions. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this information to us. I get the feeling that the scramble has more negatives than positives from your information that you provided us. Or is it just because we don't have the volume yet to warrant it? Or, I mean, if Main Street Square, when Main Street Square is as successful as we think it's going to be, then would we have the numbers to warrant it? I'm just trying to get a feel for your opinion, because it didn't sound like you were a real scramble person.
John?
Well, in fairness, I haven't been part of the Main Street Square development discussions, so I don't know what their forecast pedestrian volumes are. I don't know what their forecast, where their parking areas, where people are going to be coming from. I mean, I have some intuition about those, but not having been part of that process, I think you summed it up well, is that today, we don't have the pedestrians to warrant something like this, in my opinion. In the future, I don't know, because I haven't been part of that, and I guess time will tell, even the best forecast, time will tell how many we get. But I, you know, personally, I tried to think of that Tuesday afternoon in February at 4:30, I mean, are we going to have 1,000 people going to Main Street Square? I certainly hope so. I'm sure everybody hopes so. But is that a realistic expectation? And I think that's a type of question that was running through my mind, and I would suggest would be an appropriate question, would be, think about February 14th at 4:30, you know, what's going on there? Do we have that? Where are people parking at? I guess I, I didn't mean to come across as anti-scramble walk. It's not every time you get something that's named after a traffic engineer with a Barnes Dance, so I had to be somewhat in favor of it.
Well, even on the council, it's very excited doing the scramble. We don't get a lot of excitement up here sometimes. What would be the estimate of time if we decided that this was needed, like to get the go, to have it installed? You know, lead time, and, or is that someone else's department?
I mean, I can hazard a guess. I can speak from the signal part of things. I mean, that would be, you know, a three-to-four week project to do, to get someone to come out and put footings in and put poles up and wire it up. As far as the sidewalk ramp work, that, a lot of that, Dale might want to speak to this more, but a lot of that depends on contractor availability. There would have to be some design work to see, do we have to take out those streetscape features, or could there be another way to do it? But I mean, I would, and Dale can correct me, but I would say, you know, a 90-day window wouldn't be unrealistic.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alderman Roberts.
Quick question for Dale, if you would, please. Any ideas of rough costs of what this would cost?
I think for the, just, we could look at it a couple of different ways. Just to put up the ped heads, if you will, and not make the ramp improvements, that's probably in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000, just for the footings, the poles, the wiring for that. If you're going to make full-blown improvements to the nodes, you're probably talking another $40,000 per node. So, that's about $160,000 to fully reconstruct those nodes, to make them ADA compliant, to get the landscaping back in, get the irrigation hooked back up, relocate any other utilities that might be in the way.
And I would guess that would have to be done. We'd have to be ADA compliant. You couldn't cross a road and go around those landscapes.
That was the staff's recommendation would be, to make it ADA compliant.
Yep. Well, thank you, Dale. I appreciate that. And I think as crunched as we are for money this year in the budget, I think we might have to hold off on this, maybe till next year. Anyway, that'd be my recommendation.
Alderman Wright.
Well, Gary and I are scramble veterans. We lived here when it was here. We wondered if maybe there's some old signal blocks down the street shop, but I doubt it. But my only question is, it would be the only intersection in town like that. My only question is, it would be the only intersection in town like that, and what's the, the risk to the pedestrian in particular for a vehicle pedestrian accident, because drivers are creatures of habit? And what's the risk there?
I don't think there's so much a concern from the vehicular standpoint. A red light's a red light, even though, as Chief Allender will attest to, people do run red lights. But that, that really wouldn't, from a driver's perspective, it's going to be red, and there's no difference. I think the more realistic concern is something that I mentioned in the presentation, about people getting frustrated. You know, again, they would only see the walk symbol for that 30-some seconds of the phase. And the rest of the time, they're going to stand there, and it's going to say, don't walk, and they're going to see six street traffic going, and they're going to wonder, why can't I cross? And then they're going to see Main Street traffic going, and wonder, why can't I cross going that way? So the risk there is that, but a pedestrian's going to say, well, I'm tired of standing here, and I'm going to cross, and maybe a regular driver knows that, you know, going through, through there, that, okay, pedestrians don't go when I'm going, they're making a turn to, to go somewhere, and the pedestrian gets hit. That's more, that's the fault of the pedestrian.
Alderman Sasso.
I think, based on, you know, thank you for the information, I think based on looking at the cost, I know myself, I've been to New York City, you know, dealing with concerts, and I know that the curb space is a little larger for, for holding people, but also there'll be a decent amount of, at least on one of those corners with Main Street Square, there'll be more space for people if we do have a larger event for collecting, you know, people. I think this is something that as we move forward, we take a look at it, you know, down the road and, and see how things are going. My biggest concern would be when you look at, as you mentioned, the wait, if you have pedestrians waiting, more than likely, they're going to be impulsive, tired, want to run across, and that's where you get into trouble. That's, so, anyway, thank you.
Charlene, do we have a motion? Okay. We'll go to Alderman Nordstrom.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, make that as a motion to acknowledge the report with a acknowledgement that the idea came from Dan Seifner and Dan Tribby. So I'd like to applaud them for bringing the idea forward, not to, anyway, that's, that's my motion, to acknowledge Dan and Dan for bringing this idea forward.
Do we have a second? We have a, we have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson. We want to thank the two Dans for, for their work on this. And we'll, we'll continue to monitor this. And John, you did a great job on this study, so I want to thank you and our Traffic Engineering Division for their, for their work on this, and this may be something that will be implemented at a future time. And the opening of Main Street Square, Dan and Dan, is still October?
October 3rd.
October 3rd. Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bids.
The first bid before you is for the Out of the Dust Project for 2011. We did receive two bids on this. Recommendation is to award the bid to Hills Material Company in the amount of $68,982.75.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Davis. We'll go to Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I will have to be abstaining from this, since my brother-in-law works there as a supervisor, so I won't abstain.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a motion carries with one abstention from Alderman Gary Brown, item 98. Pauline.
98 is the bid award for the Hofer Avenue Bridge Repair Project. We received two bids on this project as well. Recommendation is to award the bid to Heavy Constructors, Inc., in the total amount of $157,451.
We have a motion by Robertson, a second by Peterson. And Dale, can you address the, the fact that this went over the Advertising Authority? I know that question's probably going to come up, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd be happy to. The original Advertising Authority and subsequent engineers' estimate, as you can see, were lower than the bids that came in. This is a type of project that the city doesn't do every day. In fact, I don't recall the last time we did a bridge replacement of this type. This is a precast deck unit. Therefore, we don't have any current data to make a, a good estimate on. Certainly, we rely on our consultant to provide us that information. However, he's working off the same sheet of music we are. We believe these are fair bids. We do have a pretty tight construction schedule. We wanted to get this project open as soon as possible, so the citizens in the area aren't inconvenienced any more than they are now. So the bids, I think, are fair, and I do recommend award to the lowest bidder.
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Dale answered all my questions. Thank you. I'll support the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item 99.
Item 99 is actually just to clarify funding, the funding breakdown on the East Anamosa Street project from north across to Century Road. You have already awarded the bid on this project, we just need it clarified, which portion is the city's responsibility to pay versus which portion, portion the state will be paying for? And I say-
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Peterson.
Did you want me to give those costs, or just leave it?
The costs are listed on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the cost? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item 100.
Item 100 is the same scenario for the East North Street Reconstruction Project from Pine Street to Campbell Street. Again, just splitting out what city versus state responsibility.
Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Pauline. Item 101, Canyon Lake Drive Status Report. Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mayor. Per your request, this item was added to the agenda. I met with the contractor today to get the latest news as far as the reconstruction of Canyon Lake Drive. As most of you are aware, the, one of the main ways in and out of Stevens High School is Hillsview Drive and Red Dale Drive. I kind of apologize for the quality of this exhibit, but I'll do my best to outline. This is Hillsview Drive, which is one-way traffic northbound, and this is Red Dale Drive, which is one-way traffic southbound. Currently, those intersections are closed. There is one-way traffic on Canyon Lake Drive from approximately this location to the west or south. Contract documents called for Hillsview and Red Dale Drive to be opened, as well as Canyon Lake Drive, to be open prior to school starting in late August this year. That didn't happen. Contract was let this spring, had an unprecedented amount of precipitation, contractor got behind. Based on the information that they've provided me today, October 11th of this year, Hillsview, Red Dale will be open, as well as Canyon Lake Drive, to two-way traffic. They've also provided me additional information as far as the balance of the project. As you can see, there are four different colors identified here. The yellow color is Phase 2, that is anticipated to be completed by December 15th of this year. The east end of the project, which is in green to your right, is also identified to be done by December of this year. And then there's a bit of the project in blue there, which is going to be open to two-way traffic in December. However, final completion of that portion will be in June of next year, and that is the final completion date for the entire project, is June. There have been some issues with traffic in the West Middle School area. I spent a good amount of time late last week out monitoring the situation. I believe that the first day of school, it was an issue, and by the end of the week, people had, had figured out alternate routes. There were minor delays getting from Jackson Boulevard to Range Road, but in my opinion, I drove through there at peak times at multiple times, and don't believe that the delays were that bad. With that being said, I do see that with the opening of Canyon Lake Drive and Hillsview and Red Dale, that traffic situation will improve out there immensely. I know a lot of people get impatient with the project, they see it as a street project, and why aren't they moving any faster? Well, this was primarily a utility project, and we have twin water mains that run down the street. We've got a 20-inch water main, which is going to be one of the major conduits from the new Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant to supply water at the intersection of 32nd or Susann and Canyon Lake Drive. That was one of the major goals of this project. And then we also have a 12-inch water main that runs parallel with it. The reason you've got two water mains, you've got two different pressure zones, and you've got to make sure you've got the correct pressure available to the people adjoining the roadway, as well as the larger diameter transmission main. So there's a lot of underground work that goes along with a project like this, and quite frankly, with the weather we had this spring and early summer with the wet, anything underground gets delayed. The contractor has mobilized every crew that they have on the project, and they've got a fully-staffed crew, three utility crews, and two paving crews. So they're going to be making a lot of progress in a short amount of time here. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to address them.
Thank you, Dale. We recognize Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you, Dale. We were out over there Thursday, and it was looking pretty bad when we were, I think, at, right at 5 o'clock. You, these projections of when these other phases, like the December 15th, 2011, is that the original projection, or is that a pushed-out?
Parts of it are original, and parts of it are revisions that have been made since they've reevaluated the schedule. They look at the schedule every week to, to make sure that they can meet particular deadlines. Quite frankly, they are behind on Phase 1. They can't make it up since that deadline's already passed, but they're going to do their very best to, to stay on task with that, and then try to get ahead on the other phases that they're working on right now.
And the contractor is being penalized, correct, for, for some of this, for being behind?
Correct. There are interim completion dates that they have not met, and they are being assessed liquidated damages per the contract amount for those delays.
Okay. Well, that might help some of the people sitting in traffic to think about. Thank you.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Brown to acknowledge. We recognize Richie Nordstrom. Richie? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 102, we covered earlier, so 102A, Summer Nights, and we'll yield to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick report on 102A. There has been a considerable amount of, of concern at various times this year from various business people relative to the Summer Nights event and the impact it may be having on their client base and traffic movement and parking, and several different issues. Several of these business folks have brought the issues to the council, and there was a, a question raised as to having a special council meeting so that we could hear what the, the issues might be. There's also been a suggestion made and a, an offer made by Summer Nights to pay, for, for them to pay for a moderator to hold a public forum with a moderator so that all concerned people, business people, people who participate in Summer Nights, vendors, the general public, can all go down and, with the help of a moderator, can actually discuss and investigate solutions to some of the, the concerns. One of the, one of the areas of concern that we as a council have is that to hold that as a council meeting, we're limited on certain rules of order that we have to operate on. So it would tend to fall back into, everyone comes forward, you've got your three minutes, you have your say, and at the end of the night, we've heard a lot of people, but have we actually found a solution? It's probably the baby's thrown back up here on our lap to decide who gets, gets to split her in half. And I think that the idea of having a public forum that is not a council meeting is a great first step. So the plan of attack at this point is to have this public forum with a professional moderator to see if the two sides that, actually, in some of the discussions I've had with them, I think they're coming closer together every day. It seems as though that many of the, the folks that were experiencing difficulties with it have seen less so, others still have as much concern. But the idea is, let's go ahead and see if we can find some solutions, and then bring the council into play. So this public forum will, the council will be invited, is my understanding, but there will be no action taken, nor will it be a, a special council meeting. After that, the suggested solutions that are brought forward, then we may be asked to act upon them. So that's kind of where we, where we're headed with that, just a, a little longer update than what I expected, quite frankly. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Alderman Davis, and the plan would be to notice this as a, as we would a council meeting, so that the entire council can be encouraged to attend. Any further discussion? Do we have acknowledgment to the report? We have a motion by Peterson, a second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 103, Vision 2012 Update. Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing to report on the 2012 funding for this last month is Phase 4 projects, the Main Street Square, the entire $3.5 million that the city had budgeted, has been expended. Therefore, all payments made to the contractor from here on out are part of the private donation, including change orders that will be dispersed to the contractor from, from here on out.
We have a motion to acknowledge. Motion by Nordstrom, second by Sasso. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 103A, Sales Tax. We received new numbers today, and Pauline, if you could present those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the end of July, we are currently up 5.93% over the same time period last year. And in fact, if you look at 2008, which was up until last year, our record year at this point, we have exceeded that as well. So the spreadsheet is attached for your review.
Any indicators on the rally?
The state has reported that the numbers are down for the rally, as far as the vendors are concerned. I have not heard anything specific to Rapid City, though.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to acknowledge? Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts, to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now open public hearing comment on items 104 through 128. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll go to item 110. Janelle Fink from the Second Floor Committee.
Mayor Quaker, council members. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm here on behalf of the Second Floor Review Committee in regard to item number 110, which is amending the comprehensive plan and adopting a new future land use plan. Our intent as a committee when we discuss this is the current tool that we have, the current future land use plan, is very detailed, very complex, difficult to work with, and cumbersome. Based on some of the recommendations from the Leahy Report, we recommended to simplify the future land use plan into four basic districts, which would be public uses, residential uses, commercial, and industrial uses. However, it was not our intent to eliminate the existing flood hazard district that overlays these, or is in addition to this. And we would like to amend our recommendation to ensure that that remains independent of the other districts. We've discussed that with growth management staff, believe we have their support on that issue as well. So that would be our request, that that be amended. Thank you.
We'll go to item 125. We have a couple of speaker request forms. Jeff Rohr, item 125.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm here to, representing the Town Homes at Red Rock Meadows Homeowner Association. I am the president of that organization. We have 48 homes, primarily on either side of Dunsmore Road and the proposed subdivision, rezoning for the purpose of building some more homes at the northern end of Dunsmore. Our concern is really not about the homes as much as a safety issue that we have on Dunsmore Road. It's an extremely dark section of the road. There's over 1,200 feet between the streetlights and we have been trying to get a new streetlight at it. The city standard traffic light criteria indicate it should be a minimum 800 feet, no more than that, and we are well beyond that. So for safety issues, this Dunsmore in our neighborhood is the primary means of getting to this new area and we're anticipating increased traffic and we're already concerned about the lighting issue. That's our concern. Number of our homeowners and members of the community there and the Homeowner Association have been raising this issue for quite a while, so I'm coming to speak to that and provide that information. And several of them are here today as well to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Also on item 125, we have Mark or Jane Com?
We have two Marks here. My name is Mark Keamfee. I'm here to speak in favor of Jeff's acknowledgement that this is a safety issue. We just moved here from Sioux City, Iowa, and I thought it was an error, like I couldn't find my house. So I had to put little reflectors on my mailbox to find my house there. So there's quite a few kids that live on the street. They're mobile. We just need some more lighting. So I really address the safety issue of this area for an additional streetlight. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And we have two Northwest Iowa farm boys on the city council and we both welcome you to Rapid City. What's that? We'll go to Mark from Clannahan.
Thank you. I just want to elaborate a bit on what Jeff said. The part of Dunsmore Road that we're talking about is between Portrush and Turnberry. It is conservatively 1,275 feet between those two points. There are lights at each of those points. There are 36 homes, when it's, when all is said and finished, there are 36 homes between those two points. Mark talked to you about putting reflectors on his mailbox. My neighbor, thank goodness, put a green light in on one of his lights on his garage so that his wife could find her home and we've not turned into the wrong driveway since. We are not really here opposed to them developing further on Dunsmore. We're here to ask you to require them to put in the streetlight. We feel that it is a reasonable request since there is a base already there. It was installed, we think, when the street was first there and it is the same developer who is asking to develop the lots on down at the end. Thank you.
Very good. Do not have any additional speaker request forms on item 125 and if I missed somebody, please speak up and let me know. We do have two speaker request forms on item 128. We'll go first to Steve Winia. Mr. Winia? Item 128.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor. My name is Steve Winia. This item was continued from a month ago. This property we're talking about, I purchased six years ago with the intention to build on this property. And we have been through the issues of traffic, alcohol sales, screening on this property. I've provided you with more info about the property. We've provided info about traffic counts on Indiana Street as well as I provided you with some information on customer accounts on two of my double casinos here in Rapid City. One on each side of town, east side of town and west side of town. It's clear that three to five cars per hour will not adversely affect the traffic counts on Indiana Street, 7th Street. We have such a minimal amount of traffic as you can see by the customer counts on the I've provided beer sales, info on beer sales right off my tax returns in a previous meeting. We serve less than a beer, on the average, less than a beer an hour. That does not translate into drunk drivers. We've also volunteered to assign a restrictive covenant to the property so it is not possible to create a bar atmosphere without council's prior approval. I feel I've gone above and beyond to provide this council with information to prove I do not operate drinking establishments slash bar atmosphere casinos. I wouldn't have an alcohol license if it wasn't required by state video lottery license. I believe there's no reason that this conditional use permit should be denied. I thank you very much for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Huffman is also available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winia. We also have a speaker request form from Marla Murphy on item 128.
I wrote this in the paper and it kind of upset me and basically your comments were in the right direction, but not really helpful to the people living in the street. This is a residential street, pure and simple. 7th and Indiana is residential. And I've heard beer counts and vehicle counts, vehicle counts of four hours for one day is not enough to make a decision or base a decision on. I heard beer counts. I looked at the numbers. They don't tell when the maximum beer counts are sold. They don't talk about inventory. They don't talk, they just give you a basic cursory amount. Not enough. But what I haven't heard is about the families who live there, the kids that play in the street. Alcohol dulls the senses. Alcohol slows down response times. Doesn't take one beer, it takes one, two, three before it starts taking effect. First off, there's no food here to help absorb the alcohol. And I know the threats that they want to say. This is not Haynes Ave, it's not Mayor Street, it's not Mount Rushmore Road, which has a major commercial access to it. This is dead center at a residential area. I'll tell you, I wouldn't want to be the one to support this and find that someone had a couple of drinks in this casino and then decides to take a turn down the residential street and there are kids playing in that street, come out between some cars and get hit. I would not want to be responsible for that if I was up there. I don't think you want to be responsible. If you want to let the courts do it, fine, let the courts decide on that. But there's kids down there, there's actually a lot more kids playing in this area than there was 10 years ago when this was in the news as a cruising spot with the police constantly being there, pulling people over, violating the speeding and the traffic signals down there. McDonald's changed their entrance, which helped slow down, if not decrease, all cruising in that area. But this neighborhood needs your support and I don't want to be, see another, I see a kid hurt or an accident caused by alcohol because it does dull the senses. And that's what you're here for, is to talk about those neighbors, those families who live there. It's not about alcohol, it's not about traffic counts, it's about neighborhoods who live there and their kids. Not to say that a commercial building can't be built there. It probably would, could be built there and I think there's plenty of businesses that would go into it. But as far as alcohol increased in this area, you're increasing the risk. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any further speaker request forms. If I missed anyone who wanted to speak on items 104 through 128, please let me know. Okay? If not, we will move on to, we will keep the public hearing open and we will move on to the consent items 104 through 106. Unless someone would like to remove one of those items, could we have a motion to continue those three items to September 19? Motion by Roberts, second by Brown to continue items 104 through 106 until September 19. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we can have a motion to close public comment on 104 through 128. Motion by Davis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we're on the consent public hearing items. This is items 107 through 117. 107 through 117. Would anybody like to remove any items 107 through 117? I believe items 111 through 114, Pauline, need to be removed so that those can be continued to the 19th.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. So we will remove 111 through 114. Would anybody else like to remove any items from 107 to 117? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve those items with the exception of 111 to 114? Motion by Roberts and a second by Davis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Items 111 through 114? We can handle these, I think, all at once. Pauline, your recommendation?
Would be to continue this, these items until September 19, 2011.
Motion by Davis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now in the non-consent public hearing items. Item 118. Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. 118. Authorize the mayor and finance officer sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of, install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, water, and sewer along the southern 400 feet of Fairmont Boulevard. This is located at the west of Mount Rushmore Road and north of Tower Road at the western terminus of Cathedral Drive. Move to approve.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 118. Alderman Brown.
Request by Renner and Associates LLC for Skyline Pines East LLP for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install a pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, water, and sewer along a portion of Fairmont Boulevard per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located west of Mount Rushmore Road and north of Tower Road at the western terminus of Cathedral Drive. I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 120.
Authorize the mayor and finance officer sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of pavement, curb, gutter, street light conduit, sewer, and sidewalk along the west side of Jolly Lane as per a portion of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 10 located at the eastern terminus of Homestead Street and north of Carl Avenue. Move to approve.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 121.
Request by Dream Design International Corporation for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, and sewer along Jolly Lane as per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at the northwest corner of Jolly Lane and East Highway 44. I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Brown, second by Peterson. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, same. Motion passes 122.
Request by Dream Design International for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to provide additional pavement on Jolly Lane as per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at northwest corner of Jolly Lane and East Highway 44. I move to approve with stipulation.
Move to approve with stipulations by Brown, seconded by Peterson. All in favor, aye. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, same. Pass. 123.
Second reading, ordinance 57. Is that mine or is that? It would be your charity. Good.
Item 123. Second reading of ordinance 5734, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within described property as requested by Spurlock Consulting, Inc., for Century Resources, Inc., for rezoning from general commercial district to light industrial district located on the south side of East Anamosa Street, southeast of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and North Creek Drive. I move approval in conjunction with associated comprehensive plan amendments.
Motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 124.
Second reading of ordinance 5735, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within described property as requested by Spurlock, Inc., for Century Resources, Inc., for rezoning from general ag district to light industrial district located on the south side of East Anamosa Street, southeast of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and North Creek Drive, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 125.
Second reading of ordinance 5736, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within described property as requested by Dream Design International, Inc., for rezoning from general agricultural district to low density residential district located at the current northern terminus of Dunsmore Road, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts for approval. And Dale, would you be willing to address the request on the streetlight on Dunsmore Road, please?
Yes, I believe this area is covered by an agreement that the developer entered into about streetlights, so they were installed by the developer and the city pays a flat rate, I believe. I don't, maybe someone can correct me. Is that correct? Okay. So there's going to have to be some coordination with the developer and probably a revision to that agreement to be able to install additional lights. So we'll check into that and work with the developer on that.
Would you add an update to the next Public Works agenda for the council?
Actually, could we make it two because the agenda deadline is tomorrow for the next Public Works Committee? If we could make that the following Public Works Committee, that would give us a little more time to have that discussion.
Sounds good. And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure that this was doable to help. I think it's a very reasonable request. When they talk about the lights and I wonder later they might be going, oh, there's too much light out here. But I think it's a reasonable request that the developers take care of that. So, thanks.
Alderman Wright.
Dale, I understand that these are installed by the, or the installation's paid for by the developer or was, and then the monthly fee is paid by us? It's under our street lighting maintenance program?
It's more or less like that. The difference is, is we actually pay the developer a monthly fee. He pays all the electrical costs and we reimburse him for that.
Oh.
That, I believe is how the agreement is structured.
Can we check on that? Because prior to that, our streetlights were like a PAL light, so much a month per light. If they're on the Woodpole Power and Light or out there, it might be Rushmore Co-op. But it should be real easy fix. It just needs a contract amendment where we're willing to pay per month for that PAL light or whatever it is, so.
It's not a PAL light.
Or streetlights.
There's three types of lights that we have in the city. One are city-owned lights. Two are lights that are power company-owned that we do pay a flat fee per month. And then the third is a special decorative light agreement, which is this case, where we actually entered into the agreement and have agreed to pay the developer a yearly fee or a yearly reimbursement for both the electrical use and then any maintenance.
So this is an agreement for perpetuity?
I believe so, yes. I believe so, yes.
I can't say that strong enough. Let's look into that. I think resolution is, should be done, and should be in compliance with what we normally do with our streetlights. I don't know how we're going to pay a developer for 15 years. What happens if he leaves? Just bring it back to us, please, as we suggested. Thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a substitute motion that we return this to Public Works, and then I'd like to maintain the form.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Nordstrom to continue item 125 back to Public Works. Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There seems to be too many questions for me to be comfortable tonight saying, let's move this along and get this information for these folks later. I mean, it's just, there's too much ambiguity here. So, let's get our information and bring it forward so we can know where we are on the streetlights, know where we are, and the developer will know where they are, too, and move forward in that direction. Thank you.
And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I had a question for some, someone from the homeowners for this area. Did you say that there are streetlights out there that the developer is not maintaining? That there's no light in it?
Oh, I said there is a base for a streetlight in the area that we're questioning.
Okay.
Okay. Approximately halfway between those two streets, there is a base on which a streetlight has never been placed.
Okay. Well, I was wondering if we needed to build some kind of incentive for the developer to maintain them. Thank you.
We have attempted to work with both the developer and growth management for, starting back three years ago.
Any further? Okay. Alderman Wright.
I have a question. The developer that's petitioning for this rezoning, is it the same that we're paying to have lights? Is it one and the same developer, or not?
Yes.
It is. Okay. I support the president's move to take it back to Public Works.
Okay. So for the record, the answer, Dale, is yes, that it is the same developer. Okay. What of Charlene Mitchell? Charlene?
Can I just have a clarification? Are we continuing this to the very next Public Works, or to two meetings out?
To next, to next week's.
It'll take some time. I mean, I guess we could add it to the next agenda, but I can't guarantee we'll have a meeting set up within the next 10 days to have some sort of a resolution to bring to the committee, so, whatever the council's wishes, we can try to accommodate.
Who's the motion maker? Davis?
Two.
And Nordstrom was the second, and you're okay with that?
All right.
Alderman Nordstrom, would you like to speak?
I just want to thank Jerry Wright for bringing these questions forward. It was, for me, after these comments came forward from Alderman Wright, it was kind of one of those itches that need to be scratched. Jerry, thanks for bringing this forward. Otherwise, I would have never known all these questions you were bringing forward. So, thank you for doing that.
Any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion? The motion is to continue this to two public work meetings out. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 126, charity?
First reading of ordinance 5737, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International, Inc., for rezoning from general commercial district to low-density residential district for area of land located on the west side of Bent Drive, south of Katron Boulevard, and east of Sheridan Lake Road. I move approval in conjunction with the comprehensive plan amendments.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 127.
Second reading, ordinance 5738, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International, Inc., for rezoning from general agricultural district to low-density residential district located on the west side of Bent Drive, south of Katron Boulevard, and east of Sheridan Lake Road. Once again, I move approval in conjunction with the comprehensive plan amendments.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 128.
Item number 128 is the appeal of the planning commission's decision on a request by Kennedy Design Group, Inc., for Steve Winiya and Damon Reel for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment located at 703 and 705 Indiana Street. And as per staff recommendation, I will move denial for discussion purposes.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson for denial for purpose of discussion. We'll first go to Alderman Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the motion maker coming forward with the motion of denial. If I may indulge the council with some items that came up in the staff report, which I strongly support. If we can turn to the staff report on item number two for the staff, and the last sentence there, it comments that the proposed screening does not sufficiently buffer the adjacent residential development from the negative effects of an increase in noise, light, and traffic nuisances that may be created by the proposed use. And I'm not going to cite everything in here, but the ones that I think are important are to be recited here. Item number 4.3 is, however, the proposed screening does not sufficiently buffer the adjacent residential district from the negative effects of an increase in noise, light, traffic nuisances which may be created by the proposed use. Item 4.4, a drainage plan must be submitted for review and approval indicating that discharge from the proposed development will not exceed pre-development. Flow rates or local detention facilities shall be provided as part of the future development of the site. At this point, I don't think we've received that drainage plan. Item 4.5, on the last sentence here, is the site plan shows that 29 parking spaces will be provided with two spaces being handicap accessible. The applicant should be aware that any change in proposed uses may trigger that additional parking may be necessary. Item 4.6, again, the last sentence, traffic from an alcohol, from an on-sale liquor establishment may negatively impact residential traffic in the area. Item 4.9, about in the middle of their, of 4.9, second paragraph, fourth line down, one of the goals of the comprehensive plan's future land use plan overview is to maintain a commitment to neighborhoods by implementing appropriate policies that preserve and improve the quality and character of the communities established neighborhoods by protecting stable neighborhoods, to prevent encroachment of incompatible commercial uses, to allow the proposed on-sale liquor establishment next to an established residential district is not in compliance with the adopted comprehensive plan. 4.11, the last sentence is, the, in particular, the street separation between the proposed on-sale liquor establishment and the existing residential development does not serve as sufficient buffer. 4.12, the site plan shows that the applicant proposes to install a vegetative buffer along Seventh Street. Does not appear that the buffer will be sufficient to mitigate the negative impacts of an increase in traffic, noise, or light nuisances from an on-sale liquor establishment. With those comments that coming, that came from the staff, I would support the motion to deny. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Wright. Jerry?
I'm thinking more on the use in review. And I am, sorry, I don't, as much as I don't like casinos, and much as I don't like to see bars everywhere, I don't know how we can deny the use in review.
Alderman Sasso. Ron?
I know this is an issue that I've heard from quite a few residents from that area, and one of the things, when you look, just taking a look at the aerial map, and how close that is to the residents, I mean, basically, you're looking, it's just a street across the street. You know, when you're, when you're talking about alcohol sales, your, yeah, your risk is very high. I feel very strongly that this is not a good location for an establishment that would be selling liquor that is not a restaurant. So, looking, looking at it from that standpoint, I definitely would urge denial. Thank you.
Alderman Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. It was said that this is a residential neighborhood. The east side of Seventh and Indiana is residential, but the west side of Seventh and Indiana is actually commercial, and that's something to keep in mind. It was also said that it's about families and neighborhoods, and I'd like to extend that and say that it's about all property owners, which makes this very, very, very difficult. And I'm speaking from personal experience on this one. My experience as an engineer was in Minneapolis. We have a very different, interesting, for lack of a better word, zoning strategy here in Rapid City, where you have general commercial abutting residential property, and again, there's going to be a lot of gray area. That's why we have given our staff the ability to use their discretion as to what is appropriate, what is, I guess, just, what's going to make sense to put in, put in these areas. I think it's important that we support staff in that they have vetted this, probably a lot more than any of us up here have. And, you know, to keep that in mind, but something that I really haven't heard brought up is, I drive by that lot quite frequently, and it is an eyesore. I would be very edgy, I guess, if I lived where Mrs. Ludkey lives, and would look out my window and see that every day. There is a chance that developing this lot is going to actually improve the neighborhood, too. And, I mean, when I, when I, when I drive by Toby's, and I've been because of the people that have been contacting me, I've been driving by there, I've been looking, I want to see what's going on there, I don't see a lot of action. And I don't know what Mr. Winiya has up his sleeve that's going to, that's going to pull a lot of, a lot of action there, but I have to wonder if this isn't going to be, not the casino itself, but developing the lot may be an improvement that no one has, has really brought questions to. Now, I will say, Steve, that if I were the property owner and I wasn't welcomed in a neighborhood, I'd have a tough time building, but I do respect the rights of property owners, so, thank you.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I am going to be voting to deny this appeal because it is abutting up against a neighborhood, and that we do need to strengthen families and strengthen neighborhoods. The safety issue I brought up last time with increased casino robberies, and I think even up in North Dakota, there was murders at casinos. I don't know if it's just a trend or a once, a one-time event, but the rob, recent robberies here in Rapid City, I'm concerned about casinos attracting, attracting that kind of element we don't want in our neighborhoods. The neighbors don't want it, and, short of repeating what has already been said, I would say those are my two main factors to concentration of alcohol in a neighborhood area. If it was like on Mount Rushmore Road or something, I would look at it differently, but since it is right up there against the houses, I have a concern about that. Thank you.
Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This issue has probably caused more angst in the last 48 hours than any one issue I remember in, in the last year. And it reminds me of an issue and a vote that I placed a year ago, almost a year ago. And it was, it was a changing moment in my understanding of my life as a councilperson, when I came to grips with the fact that, as a legislator, my moral compass would help me write the law that I wanted to get passed. That would be the direction that I would take. But as a city councilperson, I'm really directed by someone else's moral compass and the laws that they write to work within that infrastructure. It was, it was a night when I voted for something I didn't want to place, and it was a digital billboard up on North La Crosse, converting it from a static to a digital. And the bottom line was, it was a legal use for that billboard, by the way the law stood that night. Some will say that vote created a monster, because it was after that night that I became very much in favor of limiting off-premise billboards, because I realized that the way the ordinance read did not allow me to put the controls into place that the residents and my own feelings led me. Because I feel that tonight, we're being asked to vote on whether or not this is a legal use for that property, not whether the neighbors want one there. And that's really, that's a difficult one, because, Mr. Winnie, I would, would echo Alderwoman Doyle's comment, it'd be awful hard for me to go someplace and build that people didn't want me. You're tenacious, I'll give you that, because you've been back over and over. But that's not my judgment called tonight. My judgment is, is this a legal use? And, and that has really been a concern for me. Mayor Quaker, Alderman Brown and I actually brought forth an ordinance proposal last year to take away one of the concerns, and that concern is the distance. This whole thing of density is, is so ambiguous, nobody knows what it means. I mean, is it two casinos within a thousand yards? Is it five? It reminds me of the old joke about how many prunes? Is one enough? Is six too many? And I guess that's really the question we've got, is what's the distance? We brought this forward about the time that Sioux Falls had a lawsuit that they lost, and we scrapped it, because it really set us down a different path. They had a different ordinance than what I think we need to look very seriously into, and that is creating, once again, what distance creates the density when it's too dense. I'll be very blunt, I have not made my mind up, I'm going to vote on this one yet, and I'm going to be asked very shortly. But I'm leaning to move with the law rather than my gut feeling, and that, it's, this causes me a lot of angst again tonight.
Alderman Wright.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. President. This use in review is legal in its owning, correct? If approved by us?
The use, the use is legal. The two questions really before you tonight, based on the report by staff, and it's two subjective criteria. Is it sufficiently buffered from residential areas? Now, Alderman Davis has alluded to the fact that you could have a specific requirement that says you can't have a casino with 200, within 250 feet of a residential area. That would be an objective criteria. If it was beyond that, you could do it. If it was less than that, you couldn't. You don't have an objective criteria, you have a subjective criteria, and it's really dependent on the specifics of the proposal in front of you. The second is whether or not it will create an undue concentration of similar uses so as to cause blight, deterioration, or substantially diminish or impair property values. Those are the two, and again, that's a subjective criteria that you need to look at and decide. What I will say, the previous cases that I guess the city's been involved in in the last year or two have shown, is that you need to have some evidence- last year or two have shown, is that you need to have some evidence of those subjective criteria in order to justify them legally in a court. Just saying that it doesn't, that it's an undue concentration, or that it's not sufficiently buffered, is not sufficient. There has to be some sort of evidence or some sort of indication that that is the case. So, I would urge the council, if you are going to deny this, that as much as possible, you cite the specific factors you're relying on and the information you're relying on to say that it's either an undue concentration or it's not sufficiently buffered.
Alderman Brown.
Hey, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir. The test may be next door, there's a casino named Toby's, correct? That has not created a mass outmigration of people. I don't, is anyone aware of calls for service from the police department because of that facility? Are there anything that's creating problems from that facility? That's as close to objective data that we could have, and I don't hear any reports to the effect that Toby's is doing anything that we're discussing. So, I do feel that, and I'm going to make a motion that we support the use on review on the basis that we only have subjective information that's not documented, and we have no facts to go by. So, I would make a motion that we, substitute motion, we grant the use on review, if that's correct.
We have a motion by Wright. Do we have a second to grant the use on review? We have a second by Davis for discussion. We'll go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Joel, please. Joel, Steve is a very good businessman, I know him. He operates good facilities. It's my understanding that what he plans to build is a building there with two businesses. And, thank you, Steve, he's nodding yes. One to be a casino, and one the other side to lease out to another renter. If that did not work out on the other lease, could another, could he put in another casino on that side, putting the machines much like what Toby's did, in that without coming back through, just be able to go on condition? How does that work?
You know, talking about a hypothetical situation is sometimes difficult, but I would say each casino is generally treated as a separate. You can have so many machines per casinos, which is why you often have a separation wall or something where they are. I would argue that a new casino in a different suite would require an additional review. I can't answer what happened with Toby's or why that, if it didn't come back, and perhaps it should have. What I can say is that, my opinion sitting here right now, is if you have a new casino in a separate, you have two suites, you have one casino in one, and you're applying for a license, I think you would need a second license, and that would require a second use on review.
We just can't do like that, and have a whole wall. So, you got two, and work it.
Well, I'm not going to say you can't do that, but if you were required to have two licenses, then you were going to require two uses on review. And I think there is a limit on the number of machines you can have per license. So, my understanding is generally when a casino does that, they have to get another...
If he has two licenses, he could put two in over there if he wanted to.
Correct, but I would question if you have a different suite and you're getting a second license, then that second license would also require use on review.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson, and then we'll go to Ron Sasso.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to address a couple of comments that were made by my distinguished colleagues. Comments, one of them was the law, the law provides for us to make this decision, and to say or to indicate that there's a law out there already predetermined would be indicating that we don't even need a council, because there's already a decision's already been made somewhere, that the true answer exists. I think that, and to say that there's no evidence that this would be a negative to the neighborhood, I think all you have to do is ask yourself, if a casino was built across the street from you, do you think your property value would go down? Would you buy your house if it was across the street from a casino or a place that sold alcohol? So, I believe that is what the law says, is for us to make those decisions, to say, to have the common sense application of the law. And so, I would say that there is plenty of evidence to indicate that there is an undue concentration. There's already one right there in the neighborhood. You don't need to, you're coming in right across the street from a house, that you know those property values. I don't think a measure of a mass exodus is what's needed to see a neighborhood or impact on people's houses. I don't think we'd want to see that that's necessarily an impact, that it has to be that. It's impacting the people right around there. And even though that blank field looks ugly there, some would say that's, at least it's a place of quiet and a place for kids to do whatever they, kids like to do, run around and chase each other. And is it sufficiently buffered from residents? Well, it's right across the street from a house, so how can you say that's sufficiently buffered, when I don't think any of us up here would go and choose a home that was right across the street? I might be wrong. It's one thing if you're already living in the home, but it's quite another thing if you would go and actually choose to buy the home that was right there across the street. So, I think there's plenty of objective evidence to vote to deny this. Thank you.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso, who's been patiently waiting without a light. Alderman Sasso.
Thank you. Yes, light's on, no one's home, sorry. No, the, one thing I have to, I commend everyone for their comments, their views, and I think this is, this is one of those, one of those topics. This is one of those topics where I think we're looking at it, and there is that legal interpretation, and I believe it's possible that both can be correct. If you look, and I agree that one of the things with, when you look commercial, the commercial property, all other directions is fine. However, when you, when you are looking to the east, you have a street. They're looking at using vegetation as a buffer zone. When you're talking, you have a street, and this is one of the things, when you have commercial up against residential. This is one of the things where, from our standpoint, we're having to make a decision on, do we want alcohol sales up against, right at the edge of a residential neighborhood? I don't think we should. If this was a, if we were talking a historic district, this would basically be the environs, which is still falling, because it's right at the edge. And those are areas where you still are looking at that. And I think this is, if we're a little further in into the commercial, it's very different, but it's right at the edge, right abutting the residential. That's why I feel strongly we should deny, and we have a right to deny it. Thank you.
Jared.
Thank you. Where were you guys at when Walmart wanted to build next to people's houses? No, I'm kidding. I really have to ask the question, though, about property owners. I mean, we have residential on one side, we have commercial on one side, which one trumps the other? I mean, that's what we're being asked to choose here. So, it's so difficult, and again, I'm speaking from personal experience, but I have a question for Mr. Huffman, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Huffman. Would you mind summarizing the data that you've compiled for this, just so that it's... You can wing it.
Probably can. You know, with the question last time, I'm Rich Huffman, mayor, council member, and I represent the applicant. The question came up last time, I believe, from Councilman Mason on cars and counts. So, we put people out and had a car count, and we took a four-hour stretch during the day. We just picked a random day. I talked to Jim Kleinfelder at McDonald's. We made, I mean, there are a lot of traffic on the thorough streets. There's a lot, not much, hardly any traffic, I don't think, other than people driving around on Seventh, I mean, on Seventh Street. I mean, there wasn't anything to count. I mean, there's a lot more cars going to Mount Mushmore Road than there are going the other direction. And I think, and I gave you, and I put it in my report, I gave those numbers to everybody. You know, what they mean, I don't, I mean, I can't tell you. I'm not a professional person in that area. We just made a count and did the best we could to show that this isn't going to have a major impact. The casinos that my clients run, as Toby's, as was pointed out, there's not a lot of traffic in and out over the period of time they operate. It's not going to, I mean, it's not going to impact much. I mean, I don't know, Charity, hope that answered your question. I mean, I could go get my report and read it, but I'm not so sure that helps you any. If there's anything particular you want, I'd be glad to try and answer it.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Huffman? No? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
Thank you, sir. I believe this property has been vacant for quite some time, hasn't it? And it's been zoned commercial, I believe, probably since 1960 or '70, when they did the first zoning. Unfortunately, there's a boundary between commercial and industrial and residential. And if you're on the other side of it, it may not be all that pleasant, but that's where the boundary is. And I think if the zoning ordinance is commercial up to the middle of Seventh Street or to the lot adjoining to Seventh Street from Eighth, and the use is allowed under it, and I do believe, I still believe, that most, if not all, the things that I've heard are subjective, that the owner has the right to use it, and the use on review is reasonable. I do not like casinos, and I don't like a proliferation of bars. That's not my point. My point is similar to what the president said of the council. Is it proper and are use allowed? And that's the question we're being asked, not my moral compass on gambling or drinking. So, I do believe that it's unfortunate, there's a boundary. Too bad we don't have a green zone between the commercial and the residential. We simply don't. So, I haven't changed my mind, I'm going to, I support the use on review, even though I don't like casinos.
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the comments that have been made already have dealt with concentration. I'd just like to refer the council back to the staff's report. The concentration in their report through the planning commission was not a major factor in the denial. Traffic conditions was maybe an issue. So, if we can set those two issues aside, maybe even along the line of the moral compass issue can be set aside. But if we can take a look at what staff has recommended to the planning commission, and the planning commission supported the denial on that, is from all the other reasons that I've mentioned prior. I don't think I need to go back and repeat or recite all those conditions in there, again. But if the council is, our legal council is looking for more specifics in there, let me suggest that perhaps, and I'm not a legal expert at it by any means, but if we can look throughout that staff report that they put together, I'm thinking that there's some specifics that, within that report, that can be brought out, brought to bear. And I think the highest criteria that the staff, in my mind, what the staff was looking at is the buffer area. And that's what they were using as their main driving force as the denial. And I can't think of anything else that needs to be said about the buffer, but everybody, I understand, from the city council has their position on this right now, but I just want it, from an emotional standpoint. So, if you can look at it as more of a logical standpoint, in my mind, it really sums it up from what the staff has said to the planning commission in supporting the denial. I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Wright, and then I have a few words.
I'm only going to have one comment. I guess if we're going to want a buffer, then maybe we should change the zoning to Park Forest after we deny it. But it's commercial, ladies and gentlemen, as of now and has been for years. Thank you.
I would like to say a few words pursuant to our policies and procedures. I'll hand the gavel over to Council President Dave Davis.
Mayor Quoike. Thank you, Mr. President. I feel compelled to weigh in. I've represented this particular neighborhood as part of Ward Two for a very long time, and I think it's important that I say a few words on this regarding my concerns. I think sometimes serving in local office isn't about choosing the, it isn't, sometimes it's not about right versus wrong, it's choosing the right that is more right or the wrong that is less wrong. And sometimes it's very difficult to make a judgment call. But I think, as Alderman Nordstrom pointed out, if you take a look at the factors to be considered, the existing law gives us the discretion and the ability to make this decision. And if we look at the factors, as Alderman Nordstrom outlined, we are within our rights to deny this request. I think that the law does need to be improved down the road. I advocated for that before as a council member, and as mayor, I'm going to be advocating for that again. But, you know, our staff, our planning commission, and the neighborhood have all weighed in, and I believe that based on the proposal and weighing the criteria that the compass points south. And I would ask that this council give strong consideration to defeating this request. Right now, we are one Ward Two Alderman short. I can't predict how the vote would go if there was another Ward Two Alderman present. But, you know, I think Alderman Nordstrom has done a good job of outlining why it's important that we defeat this proposal. So, I would ask the council to consider this strongly and to please consider voting no on the current motion on the floor. Thank you.
Return the gavel to the mayor.
I'm wondering if it would be possible to make a substitute motion, as the mayor brings up a very good point, that right now, we are having a discussion about an area in Ward Two, you know, I mean, that area, and there's short representation, and that perhaps, you know, putting this off until we have full council, including full representation and votes for that area. I would like to offer that motion.
But Richie bought twice.
If, that would be request...
I'll make the motion for Alderman Sasso. The motion would be that we take form of the voting after the election. Thank you, Ron. So, that we, the motion that I will make for Alderman Sasso is that we shall... So that we, the motion that I will make for, for Alderman Sasso is that we shall postpone this decision until after the Ward Two election, so that the area that's being affected the most is represented fully.
I believe we may need a date specific, and it's possible we could end up with a runoff in the Ward Two race. So Joel, would you like to weigh in here? What would we need for the date?
I, I would defer to Charlene on the date. I would just caution the council that, you know, you are affecting somebody's rights and their property and ability to do that. There's no real guidance, I believe, in the ordinance about continuances. I did say I thought it would be all right to continue it for one time when you had requested additional information, but I would caution the council that if you continue this indefinitely, that at some point, you're probably going to run into problems. And may already, but I can't give you a straight up or down on that one at this point, having not had a chance to consider this more fully. I would just ask you to at least give that some consideration when you vote on this.
We do not have a second right now. Do we have a second? The motion was to continue this until after the Ward Two election. Robert seconded it? Okay. All right. Let's go to Alderman Nordstrom.
Excuse me, but don't you have a motion on the floor already that you haven't voted on? Are you making a substitute, substitute motion?
Yes, we, we, the motion, the process allows for us.
And Davis's motion?
We have a second substitute motion on the floor. And there's no room for more motions. So we'd have to vote on this motion and work backwards.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. This has turned into a quandary for me, and being in, this issue being in my ward, I'm, I'm struggling with how to vote on this second substitute motion. I, I do want to thank the council for suggesting that we do not continue this. And I'm, right now, I'm going to lean towards that suggestion that we do not continue this item. Again, I'm still weighing this as a decision, but right now, I'm leaning towards not supporting the second substitute motion to, to continue, primarily because we need to get this resolved, primarily because of, the owner needs to know what direction he needs to go in as well. And I, I think we need to give them that courtesy to, to allow them to, to move forward. Again, I haven't made up my, my mind on it, but that's, that's the, the direction that I'm leaning on this second substitute motion. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Let's go to our finance officer, Pauline Sumption, and then we'll come back to the three council lights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that if there is a runoff election, that would be held on October 4th, and therefore, the council meeting after that would be October 14th, or sorry, 17th. And so that would put it quite a ways out.
Right now, we have a somewhat of an unclear motion. Alderman Davis, would you want to offer some clarification?
I will try to clarify the motion that I made for Alderman Sasso. And, and first of all, I'm going to clarify why I did that, because there was a question on some. Once an Alderman speaks to an issue, parliamentary procedure keeps us from then making a motion about that. One must first make the motion and maintain the floor. So that was the only reason that I was holding Ron back on that one, was to, to get us back on track, because we faded away from that a little bit, and we need to get back inside of that. So I made the motion for him that basically said we would postpone this, and as now, we're looking at an October 17th council meeting. And I was going to say a, a number of council meetings, but we've got so many special ones right now, I think we'd confuse everybody. So the motion would then be to postpone this decision until the October 17th council meeting, which would be for the purpose of letting Ward Two be fully represented.
And that's okay with the secondor?
On it.
Okay. Do we have?
I was voted down.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I can't.
You can do that.
Yep.
Okay. Any objections to Alderman Davis withdrawing his motion? The motion's been withdrawn?
Oh.
Oh, oh, you have an objection? Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Sasso.
I just wanted a point of clarification. How long has that property been held at this, at this point? I, I, just because I believe this has been, I know this has been ongoing, and I know we want to resolve things as quickly as possible, but I, I thought I had heard that that property's been owned for about several years at this point, or?
Six.
Just wondering if 40 days is okay or too much?
Okay, the, the, I think, if somebody would like to overrule me, they can certainly offer a motion to appeal the decision of the chair, but I think it's probably best to allow the, Alderman Davis to withdraw his motion, because the motion at this point is unclear in terms of the date, since the secondor did not go along with the October 17 date. So I'm going to rule that that motion has been withdrawn. Alderman Sasso, I'll give you the floor back. If you want to offer a motion for another continuation period, you certainly can. Otherwise, we'll go back to the council lights. Okay? We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I have questions for the attorney.
And by the way, we're speaking to the second motion on the floor, which is a motion to approve the use on review and allow the casino. Bonnie?
We allowed, that was withdrawn. So, so now we're back to the second motion. The first motion was denial.
Right. The first motion was denial, and then we had a substitute motion to, but we don't, because we had a substitute motion. So now we vote on, we work backwards in substitute motions. So now we vote on the substitute motion.
Okay, I still have a question for the attorney. Okay. Joel, how does reconsideration work? It seems in the past, there was, the council voted, and they were able to come back, because if you said you wanted to reconsider it, you could come back and reconsider it. Do you have to do it the very next, the very next council meeting, or can you wait?
What I'll say is generally, you have to indicate the intent to reconsider at the council meeting, and with the decision is made. It has to be somebody who was on the prevailing side in the motion. What I will caution you is that, well, that technically may be the rule for Robert's Rules of Order. If you had a situation where, early in the meeting, you took a vote, the people involved left, you then indicated an intent to reconsider at that meeting, you could potentially have a problem. If you brought up an intent to reconsider at the next meeting, that, I believe, would be out of order. And again, you still have notice problems, because you, you always, everything you do, you should keep in mind that people who have an interest in this should have notice and have an opportunity to at least be there and, and see the decision being made and give their input.
Okay. On this ordinance, do you need just a regular majority, or does it have to be, it seemed like in the past, there was a...
It's a simple majority.
Okay, thank you.
Joel, can you confirm that it's a simple majority? It isn't, it isn't the ordinance majority?
Correct. It is a simple majority on this ordinance. I believe it's only the ordinance's expending funds that are, require additional votes.
Okay. Bonnie, you still have the four. Anything else? Okay. Alderman Gary Brown.
Other question.
We did have another speaker light. Okay. All right. Do we have a second to the motion to call the question? Okay, we have a motion by Brown and a second by Wright to call the question.
Pointing to clarification.
The, the motion here is to do nothing more than to simply end debate. We're not voting on whether to allow anything or not, except to, to stop the debate. So the motion is to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Questions when called, we proceed directly to voting on the motion. No more debate. And the motion is to allow the use on review and allow the, allow the casino. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Can we have a roll call? Charlene?
Roberts.
No.
Brown.
No.
Wright.
Yes.
Nordstrom.
No.
Doyle.
Yes.
Sasso.
Yeah.
Davis.
Yes.
Peterson.
Three to five.
We're back to the original motion. We'll proceed directly to a vote on the original motion. Everyone understands the original motion? The original motion is to uphold the appeal and deny the use on review. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Brown.
Aye.
Wright.
No.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Doyle.
Aye.
Sasso.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Five to three passes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Do we have a motion to approve the bill list? We have a, a motion by Wright and a second by Doyle. Pauline, anything notable?
No, sir. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we do have an executive session.
That is correct. It would be for the purposes under 125-2 sub-three, to discuss pending and proposed litigation.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to executive.
Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Peterson to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Brown to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.